We'll call the D-74th Board of Commissioners to order. We will open with a meditation, please. All right, we'll have the flagrant allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice of all.
All right, we'll have the approval of the minutes. We're going to have a motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes by Richie Burke, second by Adam Mann. Anybody?
Do we need to take item seven off the agenda?
That's down here.
But we can't do that until we...
Okay.
Isn't that too early?
It is tonight.
Okay.
You want to come run the meeting, Darrell?
No, go ahead.
Okay. All in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Puts, ayes have it, minutes passed. All right, now is it time for organizational meeting? I guess it's...I don't really know how to do this because I'm fairly new at it. I guess it's time to say adieu and goodbye to Nancy and Hannah and they...job well done. I wish I could say more, but I haven't started any time with y'all. So if y'all would step down from the chair, we're going with the motions. Where'd she go?
I'm right here.
Becky, you will take off here and start this organizational meeting now and go ahead and get started.
Okay, all right. I'm going to read the abstract of votes from the regular election held on Tuesday, November the 5th, 2019. For the office of mayor, Bobby Owens, 267 writings, 23. Our mayor is Bobby Owens. For the office of commissioners, we had three seats open and the votes were Betty Selby, 216, Darrell Collins, 183, Jason Borland, 153, Hannah Frye, 153, Nancy Pill, 122, and seven writings. Commissioner Hannah Frye conceded, so the top three vote-getters were Betty Selby, Darrell Collins, and Jason Borland. And I'm going to administer the oath.
Yeah, as clerk.
First to the mayor and then to the commissioner, so.
All right, I'd like to...
Yes. We've got to go down here, Bobby.
I'd like to have a grandson, my daughter-in-law, and my great-granddaughter.
They're going to come up and they're going to hold the Bible.
Okay, yeah, we're right there.
Right over in the middle. You stand next to me. I do that. Okay, kind of like this, and then place your hands and raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
State name.
Bobby Owens.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewithin.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office as mayor?
The duties of my office as mayor?
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, buddy.
Thanks, buddy, I really appreciate it.
Yeah. Give him a whole corona.
Okay, now we're going to hear Carol Collins.
Eddie's going to hold it on.
And he has the aye taken in.
Aye Darrell Collins.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina?
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As commissioner for town management?
As commissioner for town management.
So help me God. So help me God. Okay. Ready? Say your ayes. Repeat after me. Aye, state name.
Aye Betty Selby.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina?
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As mayor pro temp?
As mayor pro temp.
Of the town manager?
Of the town manager.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay. And the next thing would be the nomination and appointment of a mayor pro temp.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll open nominations for mayor pro temp. Any nominations open?
I'd like to nominate Darrell Collins, please.
All right, Darrell Collins' name has been submitted as mayor pro temp. Is any other names be submitted?
I nominate Betty Selby.
Betty Selby has been nominated for pro temp of mayor. Would take it in order. All in favor of Darrell, raise your hands. One, two, three. All in favor of Betty Selby, raise your hands. Listen, y'all want to protest, come up here and sit in this chair. All right, seems to be a tie vote. I guess it's up to me. I'm going to choose Betty Selby. I declare... We've got to have a vote. All in favor of Betty Selby as mayor pro temp, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations, Betty.
I'm going to administer the oath. For mayor pro temp.
That's mayor pro temp, I said so.
I've got to give her another oath.
You've got to get up and take a oath, Betty.
Use the same Bible, use the same.
I'll have my twin brother hold it this time, though.
Just raise your hands and say, aye, state name.
Aye Betty Selby.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As commissioner?
As commissioner.
For town manager?
For town manager.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. And the next thing would be the nomination and appointment of a mayor pro temp.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll open nominations for mayor pro temp. Any nominations open?
I'd like to nominate Darrell Collins, please.
All right, Darrell Collins' name has been submitted as mayor pro temp. Is any other names be submitted?
I nominate Betty Selby.
Betty Selby has been nominated for pro temp of mayor. Would take it in order. All in favor of Darrell, raise your hands. One, two, three. All in favor of Betty Selby, raise your hands. Listen, y'all want to protest, come up here and sit in this chair. All right, seems to be a tie vote. I guess it's up to me. I'm going to choose Betty Selby. I declare... We've got to have a vote. All in favor of Betty Selby as mayor pro temp, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations, Betty.
I'm going to administer the oath. For mayor pro temp.
That's mayor pro temp, I said so.
I've got to give her another oath.
You've got to get up and take a oath, Betty.
Use the same Bible, use the same.
I'll have my twin brother hold it this time, though.
Just raise your hands and say, aye, state name.
Aye Betty Selby.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina?
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As mayor pro temp?
As mayor pro temp.
For town manager?
For town manager.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations, buddy.
All right, we'll come back into session in order. Ms. Manager, take off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six, consent agenda, this is for action. However, accordance with the Roberts Rules of Order, any member of the Board of Commissioners may remove an item from the consent agenda and have it heard separately. Commissioner Mann has requested the removal of item 6A, the approval of resolution 2019-14 opposing reclassification of jurisdictional waters. That is, he has asked for that to be pulled from the consent agenda and therefore it has to be considered by the Board separately. And the reason Mr. Commissioner Mann has asked for this to be pulled off 6A is that he has requested a recusal from that. For this recusal to take effect, it would require a motion, second, and vote from the Board of Commissioners to allow that recusal.
All right, Commissioner Mann's asked to be excused, recused from this item and we have to have a motion, as I understand it. Can we have a motion to excuse or recuse Commissioner Mann?
Can we recuse him?
Yes, Commissioner. In this particular case, the general statute allows someone to be recused if they have a direct financial interest in it. And in this case, employment by the agency obviously is a direct financial consideration there, so in accordance with the statutes, it is appropriate for his recusal to be allowed.
Yeah, I'm employed by one of the agencies that's in that motion, so.
Okay, well, I make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to recuse Eddie from the vote.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Christine, second by Betty. That recuse, we would recuse Commissioner Mann from item 6A, all in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations, Betty.
I'm going to administer the oath. For mayor pro temp.
That's mayor pro temp, I said so.
I've got to give her another oath.
You've got to get up and take a oath, Betty.
Use the same Bible, use the same.
I'll have my twin brother hold it this time, though.
Just raise your hands and say, aye, state name.
Aye Betty Selby.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina?
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As mayor pro temp?
As mayor pro temp.
For town manager?
For town manager.
So help me God. Congratulations. Okay, the next one is up to you, the last one.
Well, you made something.
Well, I mean, the next thing on the organizational meeting is the appointment of the town manager, town clerk?
Right.
And town attorney.
Town clerk?
Town clerk, town manager, and town attorney.
All right, Will.
It's part of the charter, it's part of the town charter.
Okay. All right, we've got three oaths, the appointments of the town manager for the coming year, the town attorney, and the town clerk. So I'm going to start with the town clerk. Can we have a nomination for the town clerk?
Can I make that, you, Brian Holtz?
Okay.
Maybe.
Becky Reed Holtz has been nominated as town clerk. Is anybody else to be nominated? Anybody else to be nominated? Can we accept Becky by acclamation? We can do it, so if that's all right, we'll do it. All right, acclamation?
Sure.
Okay. You're in. Who swears you in?
I am.
Huh?
I've already been sworn.
Okay. All right, we're going in order. We have an opening for town attorney.
I nominate Wyatt Booth.
Okay. We have a nomination for town attorney, Wyatt Booth. Is there any other nominations for town attorney? All right, is there any other nominations for town attorney? Can we name Wyatt by acclamation?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go to my classes on the 15th, but I do have a question. With me being new, and I'm not sure about you, Jason, I'd like to have more discussion on this because I don't know. How do you do?
Well, I guess we can table it. Can we table it?
I'm being new.
I don't know the procedure.
It's part of the order, it's in your town charter that every time after an election you appoint the town manager, the town clerk, and the town attorney.
We don't have, we can hold off or not hold off. What do you say?
Well, I'm just saying that it's in the charter that you appoint.
All right, kind of, man, get in this room, we've got a lot to say.
Okay, I can nominate somebody. I nominate Jeff Maloney.
All right.
Who?
Jeff Maloney.
I really rather table it so we can find out what's going on.
I think we can table it so we can discuss it. Jason, what do you think? I see you nodding your head, I think I'm in agreement with you.
Yeah, I mean, I like that.
Table it, because you're new, too, and you want to ask some questions.
That's right, that's right.
All right, there's been a move to table the nomination for town attorney. Let's open it for further discussion or we'll lay it over and table it till the next meeting. Want to lay it over and table for the next meeting?
I mean, I'm comfortable nominating Wyatt as well.
All right. Well, there's been one nomination, so we already have that, but you're just second, I guess is what you'd do.
He's done a great job.
What do we do with town manager?
If you do have a motion and a second, that could go up for discussion amongst the Board and then vote on that. And if that motion fails, then you could vote on the other motion for tabling.
All right. All right, you want some discussion? Go ahead.
As I've said, Jason, I can't speak for Jason, I can speak for me. Just getting on this board, I would certainly know that attorney plays a very important role in the procedures and overall. And I certainly would like to read and get more clarification and know a little more before I make a decision on this.
Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something we'd like to...
All right.
Like to explore options and...
I'm kind of lost on now, I need some help, but...
And if it's helpful to the Board, I serve at your will.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, that's what I was trying to table it and hold it in advance and then have discussion and we can appoint or take away. The town attorney, county manager serves at the pleasure of the Board, you can relieve him anytime or hire new one anytime. But I do know that. So I would suggest we table it until the next meeting and get time, everybody gets some discussion, talk back and forth to everybody, but that's up to the Board, not me.
Can we table it till the next major meeting and not the workshop meeting?
Yeah, the major meeting.
Yeah.
Not workshop.
Yeah, because I don't want to make any decisions in a workshop meeting.
Because it's only 30 days.
Right, I think that's fine.
How do you feel about it?
I like Wyatt, but I'm willing to table it if that's the...
All right, somebody just make a motion, we table the appointment until the next meeting.
I make a motion that we table the appointment of the next meeting.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, the motion, second, we table the town attorney appointment until the next meeting in November, I mean, January. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute, let's try to raise hands because I'm not able to vote usually. See a raise of hands? Okay, it's four, all opposed? Two, and so the motion carries. We table the town attorney until the next meeting in January. All right, the appointment of the town manager. Can we have a motion on the town manager? Or a suggestion, a name?
A motion to appoint James Ayers as town manager.
All right, James Ayers' name has been submitted as town manager for the coming year, or at our pleasure. Is any other names be submitted? Any other names be submitted? All right, can we take and name Mr. Ayers by acclamation? Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
All right, we will, James, you're in, for the coming year. And both, like I said, I will repeat again, both of these are by appointment at any time. We can hire and fire at will with these two appointments. So just so you understand it tonight, I've been, it's been a little bit confusing because I am brand-new at this, I have no idea, I'm in uncharted waters. So we're doing the best we can do, but it sounds like pretty good right now, so James, you've been reappointed to town manager. Congratulations.
Thank you.
James has always been right by my side telling me what to do and what not to do, and he's kept his mouth shut night and he said one word and left me hanging. All right, let's move on. Adoption of the agenda. Have a motion on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Except for one, we have, I don't know how to do this one either, we have adoption of the agenda, we have to have a motion on it, and end the consent agenda to approve of resolution 2019-14 opposing reclassification jurisdictional waters. And Mr. Mann has asked to recuse himself from this item, so do we have a vote on the recusal?
So the first thing we've got to do is delete item seven.
That's what I...
Yeah, so the first thing we've got to do is delete this tour run presentation item, so, and then you approve it, and then the consent agenda will be...
All right, I've been told by the attorney that we have to delete number seven presentation, Dare County Tour Run, Terry Gray, Shane Baum, so I'd have a motion.
I'll move to drop the agenda with the removal of item number seven.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Eddie to remove the item seven from the consent agenda, seconded by Richie.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Now, we go back to adoption of the agenda. Would you...
So the agenda, then there's adoption, and aye on the consent agenda.
Okay, all right, we're now in the consent agenda, so go ahead, Ms. Manager, now or you can say something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six, consent agenda, this is for action. However, accordance with the Roberts Rules of Order, any member of the Board of Commissioners may remove an item from the consent agenda and have it heard separately. Commissioner Mann has requested the removal of item 6A, the approval of resolution 2019-14 opposing reclassification of jurisdictional waters. That is, he has asked for that to be pulled from the consent agenda and therefore it has to be considered by the Board separately. And the reason Mr. Commissioner Mann has asked for this to be pulled off 6A is that he has requested a recusal from that. For this recusal to take effect, it would require a motion, second, and vote from the Board of Commissioners to allow that recusal.
All right, Commissioner Mann's asked to be excused, recused from this item, and we have to have a motion, as I understand it, can we have a motion to excuse or recuse Commissioner Mann?
Can we recuse him?
Yes, Commissioner, in this particular case, the general statute allows someone to be recused if they have a direct financial interest in it. And in this case, employment by the agency obviously is a direct financial consideration there, so in accordance with the statutes, it is appropriate for his recusal to be allowed.
Yeah, I'm employed by one of the agencies that's in that motion, so.
Okay, well, I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recuse Eddie from the vote.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Christine, second by Betty, that we would recuse Commissioner Mann from item 6A. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, 6A having been pulled off the consent agenda, it may be considered on its own merits by the balance of the Board of Commissioners. And in this particular case, it is that resolution 2019-14 opposing the reclassification of jurisdictional waters due to the impact on the marine, on the reduction of 226 square miles of coastal and commercial fishing waters. This is, because it's been pulled off the consent agenda, it would require on its own a motion, second, and a vote if you should choose to consider it for passage.
All right, I don't know anything about this reclassification, Mr. Manager, you want to describe it?
Yes, sir. The resolution, this is following on the action by Dare County, and it asked us to join in in this case. There had been a joint commission established between the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission and the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. They had a joint task force that, for the purpose of determining boundaries that would define inland and coastal waters. That definition affects where fishermen can actually fish, and unfortunately, the joint commission, one party took unilateral action to reduce those waters available for commercial fishing. So this resolution is asking to oppose that due to the marine heritage in this area to reduce the waters available for fishing. It was considered inappropriate for Dare County, and now the town manager is being asked to join in that resolution.
But we recused Eddie from voting, so can we not just vote on the consent agenda?
These will vote on the rest of the consent agenda, just not this one.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Can we have a motion on the approval of resolution opposing reclassification jurisdictional waters?
I made the motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Richie, seconded by Christine, that we approve the resolution opposing reclassification jurisdictional waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, okay.
The remaining items on the consent agenda are items 6B, C, D, and E. 6B is approval of proclamation for General Aviation Appreciation Month in December. Item 6C is the approval of text amendments to the personnel policy. Item 6D, approval of text amendments to purchasing and bid requirements policy. And item 6E, approval of request for consideration of writing off as bad debts from the water and sewer accounts receivable. Each of the items have been published in accordance with our usual practice and available to the public. The consent agenda would also require a motion, second, and a vote.
All right, you've heard about the consent agenda from the manager. All in approval, adoption, I believe, consent agenda with the expiration of...
And name Mr. Ayers by acclamation. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
All right, we will. James, you're it for the coming year. And both, like I said, I will repeat again, both of these are by appointment at any time. We can hire and fire at will with these two appointments. So just so you understand it tonight. I've been, it's been a little bit confusing because I am brand new at this. I have no idea. I'm in uncharted waters. So we're doing the best we can do. But it sounds like pretty good right now. So James, you're been reappointed town manager. Congratulations.
Thank you.
James has always been right by my side telling me what to do and what not to do. And he's kept his mouth shut tonight. He said one word and left me hanging. All right, let's move on. Adoption of the agenda. Have a motion on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Except for one. We have, I don't know how to do this one either. We have adoption of the agenda. We have to have a motion on it. An end to consent agenda to approve of resolution 2019-14 opposing reclassification judicial waters. And Mr. Mann has asked to recuse himself from this item. So do we have a vote on the recusal?
The first thing we got to do is delete item seven. Yeah. The first thing we got to do is delete this toy run presentation item. So and then you approve it.
Okay.
And then the consent agenda.
All right, I've been told by the attorney that we have to delete number seven presentation, Dare County Toy Run, Terry Gray, Shane Baum. So I'd have a motion on that.
I'll move to drop the agenda with the removal of item number seven.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Eddie to remove the item seven from the consent agenda. Seconded by Richie.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay. Now, we go back to adoption agenda.
So the agenda, the agenda is adopted, so now you're on the consent agenda.
Okay, all right. We're now in the consent agenda. So go ahead, Mr. Mayor. You're second, or you can say something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six, consent agenda. This is for action. Beginning of this consent agenda, however, any member of the board-
Excuse me. If you folks, if you, I know you don't want to sit through all this, but if you do, you certainly welcome to, we'd love to have you. But if you'd like, we're going to take time to excuse you folks. If you want to leave, and it's up to you and whatever. Because now it's just going to be business as usual. I know you all don't want to sit here through that.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you for coming.
All right, we'll come back in session in order. Mr. Manager, take off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six, consent agenda. This is for action. However, accordance with the Roberts Rules of Order, any member of the Board of Commissioners may remove an item from the consent agenda and have it heard separately. Commissioner Mann has requested the removal of item 6A, the approval of resolution 2019-14 opposing reclassification of jurisdictional waters. That is, he has asked for that to be pulled from the consent agenda, and therefore it had to be considered by the Board separately. And the reason Mr. Commissioner Mann has asked for this to be pulled off 6A is that he has requested a recusal from that. For this recusal to take effect, it would require a motion, second, and vote from the Board of Commissioners to allow that recusal.
All right, Commissioner Mann's asked to be excused, recused from this item, and we have to have a motion, as I understand it. Can we have a motion to excuse or recuse Commissioner Mann?
Can we recuse him?
Yes, Commissioner. In this particular case, the general statute allows someone to be recused if they have a direct financial interest in it. And in this case, an employment, employment by the agency obviously is a direct, is a direct financial consideration there. So in accordance with the statutes, it is appropriate for his recusal to be allowed.
Yeah, I'm employed by one of the agencies that's in that motion, so.
Okay, well, I make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to recuse Eddie from the vote.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Christine, seconded by Betty. That recu, we would recuse Commissioner Mann from item 6A. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, 6A, 6A having been pulled off the consent agenda, it may be considered on its own merits by the balance of the Board of Commissioners. And in this particular case, it is that resolution 2019-14 opposing the reclassification of jurisdictional waters due to the impact, impact on the marine, on the 200, reduction of 226 square miles of coastal and commercial fishing waters. This is, because it's been pulled off the consent agenda, it would require on its own a motion, second, and a vote if you should choose to consider it for passage.
All right, I don't, I don't know anything about this reclassification. Mr. Manager, you want to describe it?
Yes, sir. The resolution, this is, this is following on the action by Dare County. And it asked us to join in in this case. There had been a joint commission established between the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission and the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. They had a joint task force that, for the purpose of determining boundaries that would define inland and coastal waters. That definition affects where fishermen can actually fish. And the, unfortunately, the joint commission, one, one party took unilateral action to reduce those waters available for commercial fishing. So this resolution is asking to oppose that due to the marine heritage in this area to reduce the waters available for fishing. It was, it was considered inappropriate for Dare County, and now the town of Manio is being asked to join in that resolution.
But we recused Eddie from voting, so can we not just vote on the consent agenda?
These will vote on the rest of the consent agenda. Just not this one.
Any other discussion? Can we have a motion on the approval of resolution opposing reclassification jurisdic, jurisdictional waters?
I made the motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion by Richie, seconded by Christine, that we approve the resolution opposing reclassification jurisdictional waters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay.
The remaining items on the consent agenda are items 6B, C, D, and E. 6B is approval of proclamation for General Aviation Appreciation Month in December. Item 6C is the approval of text amendments to the personnel policy. Item 6D, approval of text amendments to purchasing and bid requirements policy. And item 6E, approval of request for consideration of writing off as bad debts from the water and sewer accounts receivable. Each of the items have been published in accordance with our usual practice and available to the public. This, the consent agenda would also require a motion, second, and a vote.
All right. You've heard about the consent agenda from the manager. All in approval, adoption. I believe consent agenda with the expiration of 6A.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion by Darrell, approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Jason. All in favor of the consent agenda being approved is Red. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, we'll move on.
Yes, sir. Item number seven on the agenda. This is the presentation that has been removed from the agenda at the request of the presenter. They are expected to come back at the mid-month workshop meeting. Item number eight, public comments. This agenda item is for information. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Action on items brought up during the public comment period will be at the discretion of the Board. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers will address all the comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the podium and identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded.
All right. Now it's time for a public comment period.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Courtney Gallup. I reside in Naggs Head, North Carolina. My reason for addressing the Board tonight is it's, number one, to reinforce an email that I sent to Mr. Ayers a couple of weeks ago. Could I possibly get confirmation that Mr. Ayers received that and it was on the record concerning Outer Banks Jet Pack?
She's talking to you.
Well, I just don't run that back and forth. Yes, the, the email has indeed been shared with the Mayor and Board of Commissioners as appropriate.
Okay, thank you for that. And that's helpful.
Let me say something, Courtney. I lied that I shouldn't have probably because there's no comment back and forth from the Board. And since he is the town manager, you want confirmation, do something with, about the town and your transmission to him. I lied it, but don't ask the Board. The Board will not respond anymore to any more questions. Normally, we don't do that.
I appreciate the courtesy on that. Just, that gives me a starting point if you've seen the comments in writing. I'm here to reinforce those comments. I'm here as a small business person and a personal colleague and friend of Mr. Butch Stone, who owns a local business that's been operating in Manio Town Waters for the last number of years. Outer Banks Jet Pack. For those of you that aren't familiar, Outer Banks Jet Pack is a recreational business that emphasizes families and kids exploring aviation and exploring local waters and nature. I believe that he offers a very family-friendly and recreational and healthy amenity and activity for visitors and locals to Manio. Mr. Stone, I know him personally. I'm being informed that there is, have been some actions or some rules established that might threaten the viability of an operation of his, of his business. And I apologize, I have not done the research on that. By the way, I have, I've been looking in the minutes and so forth to try to research that issue. I haven't had much luck with that. So admittedly, I don't have all the background. But I do want to reinforce the value of Mr. Stone's business, of what it brings to this town, the fact that he is an ambassador on the waterfront. I've seen Mr. Stone at all the festivals and the different events in Manio, Dare Day and so forth. He's a fixture down on the waterfront. Residents and visitors alike visit Mr. Stone, and he really is a positive face on the town of Manio. And I would hate to think that this town is going to enforce an ordinance or draft an ordinance that would put a legitimate, family-oriented, healthy, viable business on the line and in jeopardy. And I ask you to please reconsider any action that would force Mr. Stone out of business. I can verify he will cooperate with you into whatever compliance issues there are with that business. He's a fine person and an excellent businessman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Courtney. Next, anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Luke Bear. I am Recreation Manager for Kitty Hawk Kites at the Manio Store on Queen Elizabeth. I reside in Kill Devil Hills. I am here also today as a supporter of the OBX Jet Pack. Kitty Hawk Kites has booked reservations for the OBX Jet Pack for the last eight years to the tune of about 2,000 participants that have come to the Manio waterfront over the past eight years. That's not the number of family, number of family members that have come, but certainly that number is expounded by the number of families that have come to the, to the Manio waterfront, to the town of Manio, and probably gone to other businesses in the area as well. To Ms. Gallup's point, there is, there is regulation that I've seen. Mr. Ayers, thank you so much for how helpful you've been in giving me the information. I am trying to understand that the, the, the nature of the prohibition of, of the Jet Pack in Town Waters for, and I quote, "due to health, safety, and welfare concerns." So just trying to understand that, and I need to know where I can go to get clarification on that because to support Mr. Stone's business, the OBX Jet Pack, I'm sure there could be potentially some sort of conditional use. Other, other watercraft, personal watercraft are, are granted permission to be used in Town Waters, but they're, for instance, personal watercraft are not permitted to be rented. But this activity is nothing quite like that. It is a one-on-one experience where one person's being taught a lesson at all times. So the safety implications compared to renting a jet ski, for example, are very different from basically turning the keys over to another person. Other activities such as scuba diving, things of that nature, have been explicitly given permission. And I don't mean to single out scuba diving, but there's many other ones, parasailing, tours, things of that nature. So this one specifically was singled out. And as I've gone over the minutes for the last several months, I was able to find in October that there were 11 complaints, or excuse me, 11 endorsements prohibiting the Jet Pack from the October meeting. But I have not been able to find the details or the nature of those endorsements to prohibit the Jet Pack. And I merely want to know what they are so we can better understand if there's a way for this business to, to potentially be able to come back and find a way to directly address the health, safety, and welfare concerns that have been spelled out in this, in the new ordinance for Town Waters. Let's see what else do I have here? We have, we've been at the waterfront at Kitty Hawk Kites for a long time as, as a water sports business. I know that I didn't do my job to pay attention to, to the announcements by the town that there might be some regulations coming for, for, for Town Waters. But as a, a business that operates in Town Waters, it would have been nice to have received direct communication to that effect potentially, so in case we could have been here too earlier to head off that regulation at, at the pass. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Tim Teepel, and I do live at 101 Fernando Street. And I know that this was brought up on Wednesday's meeting, or workshop meeting, and I could not present my feedback. I am somebody who actually does overlook the Jet Pack every single day. As Butch first started with the Jet Pack, he used to bring in the boat right next to Kitty Hawk Kites, and he used to keep the boat right there. Since then, he has figured out that he could then launch his boat in the middle of, right by the lighthouse, where it's a floating billboard, free advertisement. There are hundreds of wedding parties that take pictures there, and his boat is right behind it. I've told him before that that wedding, people might not appreciate that, and it is another business that we have to look at. What's to stop another person from lighting another billboard out there? I also realize, because I did work on the parasail boat for many years whenever he first came, parasail does go outside the boundary waters that we were talking about. We do not launch inside the inlet because it is dangerous. At any time, the air could, I mean, the wind can change and it can move the parasail. So we are actually outside of district. With that, I have watched Mr. Stone come inside the marina. It is a no-wake zone many a times. He has also come right next to the parasail boat to do advertisements. During Dare Days last year, a fishing wildlife officer did have to go over to Mr. Stone as well to have him please move away from the boardwalk because he was in, within 10 to 20 feet. And since it is a motorized propelled machine and that they are renting for a, for an hour, just like they would any other jet ski that is not prohibited, I don't understand the difference. And therefore, I do support the motion that is being passed, or that is trying to be passed because I have seen firsthand from somebody who does live downtown gets to overlook the business at all aspects and also some of the other issues that it does preside for the future, such as putting billboards outside, the derelict boats that we've also been talking about, and other issues. And I did present this to Mr. Stone about two months ago, that if he would like a statement, he should probably come to the meetings because it was being stated. And I feel like everybody should have a voice. So I do appreciate everything, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Chris Rodriguez, and I reside in Kill Devil Hills. I am a friend of Butch Stone. I have flown with him many times. I was the very first person that he flew here in the Outer Banks back in 2015. I can tell you it's safe. I've flown it. I've never gotten hurt. We've flown a bunch of families. We've flown adults. We've flown children. We've never had any issues out in the water. If, if a boat has come close, we've, if we've been asked to move, we've always moved. As, as he stated, Butch did get close a couple of times into the marina. They came over, they asked us to move. We have moved. That's never been an issue with, you know, with, with Butch trying to, you know, he tries to follow the rules, you know? You know, I've seen people that have had surgeries on their, on their knees, on their hips, you know, and they think they're never going to be able to do things again, and we offer this service that's amazing for people. You know, they think they can never do anything again, and they're out here doing something amazing. And then after they go out and have this amazing experience, you know, we send them over to the town to have, you know, to have, to have lunch, you know, to have, to have coffee, you know? So it, it, it's helping the business here, you know, here in the waterfront of Manio. You know, we were all kids once, you know? We all like to run, play, do exciting things, do, do fun things. And sometimes I think when we grow up as adults, we get lost in the politics of being adults. You know, ask yourself, you know, ask your 10-year-old self, your 12-year-old self, what would you do, you know, if, if you had this opportunity to fly a Jet Pack or fly a flyboard? Don't you think it'd be kind of cool to do something different? You know, I was run over in 2017, and the doctor told me I would never, I'd never walk again. And I cried, not because I, I didn't think I could walk again. I cried because I thought I could never fly again. That's the thing I love to do. It's my hobby. I do it all the time. I don't get paid for it. I just do it because I love it. And I worked my, my tail off so I could get back on the board and fly. And it's amazing that I got to do that, and I get to see other people that come out and do that, have had knees reconstructed or hips that have been reconstructed. And I can assure you, it's, it's a safe thing to do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, we'll bring the public comments to a close. Public comments are now closed.
Item number nine on the agenda, old business. There is none before the Board today. Item number 10 on the agenda, this is new business. This item is for action. This particular item is the Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule for calendar year 2020. I would like to draw attention to the folks here tonight and the folks watching on TV as well. The, the, the one key change for the 2020 Board meeting is that it's usually the first Wednesday is the regular meeting of the Board, occurring at 6:30 PM. And then the third Wednesday of the month is the recessed or workshop meeting, starting at 4 o'clock PM in the afternoon. However, the first meeting in January would be New Year's Day. And considering we may not have a lot of folks here on a holiday like that, it was determined, the proposal to the Board is to not have a meeting on January 1st and instead hold this regular meeting at the January 15th, January 15th, mid-month at 4 o'clock PM. That would be the, that would be the primary change to the 2020 proposed meeting schedule. And this particular item is for action, requiring a vote, a second, and a vote.
All right, you've heard from the town manager on the Board of Commissioners' meeting schedules with the addendum or changing of the January meeting to the 15th, which is normally the workshop. Everything will be incorporated into one meeting for the audience who would like to attend, who do attend the regular meetings. It'll be not the first of the week, it'll be in the middle of January. So can we have a motion?
Move to approve the Board meeting schedule for 2020.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Eddie Mann, seconded by Richard Burke. We approved the new Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule with the addendum to change in the January meeting and as noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item number, not, item number 11 on the agenda. This is Mayor and Commissioners' comments. This is for information purposes.
Betty, I'm going to give you your first chance. This is it. Any comments or any statements or anything you'd like to say that, anything?
Yes, I do want to publicly let the town citizens know that I do appreciate their support and their vote. I am open to suggestions, and it's open door for me. Come and see me, come and call me, whatever. And I certainly do intend with prayer to serve as your town commissioner proudly, honestly, and morally.
Thank you, Betty. Now you're going to have to give them your private phone number. Christine?
Yes, sir, I'm fine right now.
Darrell?
I thank everybody for their vote, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Okay, thank you, Darrell. Richie?
I'm good, thank you.
Eddie?
Thank you all for coming.
Jason?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, first time up here, so thanks for the, for electing me, and I look forward to doing all the good I can.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. I'd like to take just a minute and thank everybody that did vote for me. As you see, I was a little bit stumbling tonight because I was in uncharted waters, new territory. I had never gone through nomination like this, a new experience. I will reiterate tonight, I will be here two years, and then I will be stepping down. I will not be running again. I won't say it anymore, so you'll know. So be planning on your next mayor. And I thank you all for your support and all the congratulations I've received, and I do thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir. Item number 12 on the agenda, this is closed session, this will be for action item. So to enter the closed session, the Board would need to entertain a motion to enter closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143.31811A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. And B, North Carolina General Statute 143.31811A3 to consult with an attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim, judicial action, mediation, arbitration, or administrative procedure. And item C, North Carolina General Statute 143.31815 to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body and negotiate the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. So a motion would be required to-
All right, we now have a need to go in the closed session. Can we have a motion?
Motion, go in closed session.
Motion by Darrell, we go in closed session. Is there a second? Seconded by- Second by Christine.
Oh, that was Betty.
Who?
Betty.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I wasn't even looking. Second by Betty. All in favor, go into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. One statement to the audience, these closed sessions, you know, we have to go into another room and have our meetings, and sometimes it's five minutes and sometimes it's an hour. I can't tell you how long it'd be if you want to sit and wait till we come back. We do come back in here and go out of closed session, and then we don't discuss. We generally discuss what took place, and that's it. We leave the wording up to the lawyer. So we will now declare ourselves in closed session. All right, we have a need to go out of closed session. Can we have a motion to go out of closed session?
Motion to go out of closed session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Jason, seconded by Richie. We go out of closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We're now out of closed session. Now we go back in, do we go back in open session? We do. Okay, we're in.
Yes, sir. Item number 13 on the agenda, this is adjournment or recess. This is for action. Should the Board recess, it would be to the December 18th meeting, which is at 4 o'clock p.m.
All right, you heard from town manager, have a motion to adjourn. We recessed, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion to recess.
I mean, a motion we recessed.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Betty to recess, seconded by Eddie. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We're now, I have closed session and recess until the middle of January, whatever it is.
September 17.